Awesome. All right. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call to order the September 3, 2025, meeting of the Newmarket Town Council. Item one on our agenda, as always, is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would rise, I'm Counsel Ward. You and Litas, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counsel Ward. And roll call. We have Counselor Glazebrook is out this evening. Okay. Item number three is public forum, and so we will now open the public forum. Just a brief reminder that speakers must be residents, property owners, or representatives of a civic or business organization. Make sure if you come, if you'd like to speak, that you state your name and your address for the record, and please limit your time to three minutes. Our entire forum will be limited to 15, and make sure you direct all comments to the council as a whole. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening? I spoke longer than people speaking in public forum. Okay. Seeing none, I will close public forum at 7:04. And item four is to consider acceptance of minutes. Councillors, we have two sets of minutes on the agenda this evening. The first is the August 20, 2025, non-public meeting minutes, and at this time, I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Ward, and thank you for the second, Counselor Dornblad. If you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Lamontina?
Aye.
Counselor Dornblad?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Aye.
Motion to pass this by, sir.
Thank you. And the next set of meetings to accept is the August 20, 2025, regular meeting minutes. At this time, I would accept a motion to approve those.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Thank you, Counselor Dornblad. Any discussion or changes to those? Okay. Seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Lamontina?
Aye.
Counselor Dornblad?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Aye.
Motion to pass this by, sir.
Okay. Moving right along to item five. This is to consider nominations, appointments, elections, and resignations, and we have two this evening. First on the agenda is Chase Eagleson, appointment to the town council with the term expiration of April 6, 2025. So this evening, we have one applicant, Mr. Eagleson, for the vacant position on the town council. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Eagleson to introduce yourself to the town council, and please come on up here, introduce yourself, tell us anything you'd like about why you'd like to, why you'd like to serve.
Thank you. I'm Chase Eagleson. I live over at Bennett Way at the Cherry Hill Apartments. There's a number of reasons why I'd like to serve. One is a seat that's up relatively quickly, so it gives me a chance to learn more about the position, see if I have the ability to serve in a longer term and run again. Secondly, I'd like to try to help represent people who are younger age, people who are renters in this town. And thirdly, it's based off the position that I work in currently. I work for an organization that works for, advocating for people with developmental disabilities. And I've found that a lot of towns, not saying Newmarket does, but has a lack of understanding on how to best serve people with developmental disabilities, as well as intellectual disabilities. And I'd like to try to help serve and make sure that their needs are understood as well. Not working? That's good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councillors, any questions for, for Mr. Eagleson? Counselor Dornblad?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chase, so you've been in town for, for two years, and I really appreciate that you're here to serve in a public role. I think it's a really phenomenal way to, you know, become part of a community, I think. So that's, that's wonderful, and I also appreciate that you are a younger person than, I mean, I think it's nice to have a good mix of ages on, on a body such as a, as a council. What do you think your, your, besides, you know, those kind of attributes that are, you know, that you just come with by luck of age, luck of, luck of birth, what are you bringing from your background, from your, what's your, what's your view of, of a council, and what do you hope to, to achieve here as part of this group? And how do you feel about working as a member of a, of a group of, of equals?
Thank you for the question. I think the primary job of the council is to serve the people, first and foremost, serve their best interests. And one of the things that I bring is experience actually working with a council where I served as a governor's student senator at UNH. I also served working under a council at work, working under councils with developmental disabilities. To believe, I read a paper of yours from UNH's IOD once.
That's right. That's right.
I knew your name was familiar. So that's a couple of my attributes. Also, I was lucky enough to go get my master's degree at UNH as well, where I learned community development, policy, and practice. I actually, for one of our projects, I worked with the town of Derry to help develop their community center. Unfortunately, it didn't work. It didn't come to fruition, but it's something that has been often on a project of ours.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That answered your question.
Sure. Yeah. No, I appreciate that.
Counselor, any other questions? Counselor Blackstone?
I was just curious if you've read the town charter?
I've read as much as I can. I've, I've read through it, because I understood all of it. I've read through as much as I can, yes.
Yeah, a pretty simple document. Thank you.
Counselor Ward?
Yes. So, nice to meet you. Very, what kind of, so you wanted to talk about, a little bit about housing, so what are some of the things you were hoping to achieve for the younger people of town if you get on the board, or get on the council?
Well, one of the things that's based off a piece of legislation that actually saw the state try to push through, and that was to open zoning for more manufactured housing. I know it's been an issue in the state to find any zoning for housing, and I feel that opening zoning for more easily accessible housing, such as like that, things that come in more universal design would help a lot of younger people, both with and without disabilities, get the access to be able to live in town for as long as they'd like to.
Thank you.
Any question?
I had one, but it's on, it's on accessibility. So, given your background and your work on the kind of federal agency for people with disabilities, one of the things that I think towns immediately think of when we think of accessibility is physical accessibility, right? Like ramps and all sorts of things to work with people with, you know, visual impairments or hearing disabilities. You're working with folks with, with, you know, developmental disabilities. What are some of the different ways in which towns should be thinking about accessibility with respect to a group of folks that it's not always immediately evident what the need might be?
I would think a big one that towns usually don't address, and the government usually doesn't address in general is plain language. Years ago, I don't remember exactly, there was a Plain Language Act in the federal government that made it so all government documents had to be in plain language. And unfortunately, it didn't necessarily mean they immediately came along in plain language. So I think that's one of the big aspects of towns that I think would greatly improve accessibility for people with developmental disabilities.
Awesome. That was really interesting. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. At this time, I would accept a motion to appoint Chase Eagleson to the town council with the term expiring of April 6, 2025. Do I have that motion?
He's favorite actor.
All right. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Dornblad. Any discussion from the council?
I'll just say, Mr. Eagleson did run for during this past March. He only lost by a couple hundred votes. Seems like a, a pretty good guy. That seems, I think he's dedicated, and I think he'll make a good member of the town council.
Thank you, Counselor Lamontina. And any other discussion? Counselor Dornblad?
I, I, I fully concur with what Counselor Lamontina said. I think it would be nice to have a younger voice and a new voice on the council, and since we have an opening, it's a good match.
Thank you. I agree. I think, I think Mr. Eagleson brings a lot of, a lot of experience and a lot of unique perspective that I think will add a lot of value, so I'm in favor as well. Any other comments? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Lamontina?
Aye.
Counselor Dornblad?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Aye.
Motion to pass this by, sir.
Okay.
I can administer the oath as a justice of the peace, so he can sit in right now.
Excellent.
Yeah, we start you, we start you soon. We start you immediately.
Okay. Please raise your hand. Do you, Chase Eagleson of Newmarket, do solemnly swear that you will bear faith and true allegiance to the United States of America and the state of Hampshire, and will support the Constitution thereof, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Do you, Chase Eagleson of Newmarket, do solemnly sincerely swear and affirm that you will faithfully and persist in this charge and perform all duties incumbent upon you as a member of the town council, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and states and the laws of the state of Hampshire, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations. Andrew, you got a higher copy? You're on page 11.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome, Counselor Eagleson. All right. The next item on our agenda is Timothy Littlefield's resignation from the trustees of the trust funds, and at this time, I would accept a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Mr. Littlefield.
I will make the motion with regret.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Dornblad. Any discussion? I understand that Mr. Littlefield has another job and wants to make sure there's no conflict of interest. That is why he's stepping down. Seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Lamontina?
Aye.
Counselor Dornblad?
Aye.
Counselor Eagleson?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Aye.
Motion to pass this by, sir.
Excellent. And moving right along. Item number six. All good?
Yeah.
Okay. Item number six on the agenda is the report of the town manager, and so at this time, we will turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First item is not in my written report. The Director of Environmental Services talked to me this week that probably everybody's here heard, I know Exeter's going through it right now, that the United States drought monitor recently classified Rockham County as experiencing moderate drought conditions. Exeter has put their community on stage four water use restrictions. However, Newmarket's municipal water supplies are strong. Our wells' levels are currently operating within normal condition, condition stage. Just to let you know, Newmarket tracks four stages of water supplies: normal, watch, warning, and emergency. And like I said, we're at normal right now, so no restrictions are concerned. This is a stable position as a result of the town's long-term investments in new water sources and infrastructure over the past decade. These proactive efforts give us the capacity to handle extended dry spells while ensuring safe and reliable services. I mean, this is, we're not telling you to go out and just turn your taps on in your backyard and let it flow, but I think this is just a kudos to this community. When I first got here, we were on, always on restrictions, to the point where I remember some of that, we were discussing whether or not we could shut businesses off because they were wandering outside. So I just wanted to say kudos to the environmental services and the town for getting to this point, they were able to do this. On my written report, Coast has informed us that they've received increased support from a local foundation for the Route 7 on-demand bus service. This year's funding will continue to cover the additional service they added previously and will also allow them to pilot an expansion of open service to any potential location within Newmarket and Exeter. Both communities have been advocating for this type of flexibility, and Coast is now in a position to test it. To gather community input, Coast has scheduled two public information sessions in September. One on September 9 at the Exeter Public Library from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m., and one on September 11 here at Town Hall from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. In addition, Coast is reviewing the current fare structure. The existing model, which charges $1.50 for designated stops and $3 for non-designated stops, has been recognized as overly complicated. They're offering a simplified flat fare of $3 for all three Route 7 on-demand rides. This adjustment would allow Coast to consolidate fare media across their ADA, senior transportation, and Route 7 on-demand services by using punch tickets in $1 increments. This replaces multiple fare products currently in use and makes the system easier for riders and staff alike. The second item that we're working on is, as I mentioned earlier to some councillors, working with every source to evaluate the options for making the lighting at Leo Landros Field more energy efficient and cost-effective. While recreational field lights don't typically qualify for standing, standard energy incentive programs due to the limited hours of use, we don't use them that often, you know, only times a year when schools and, you don't play outdoor sports in winter. There may be opportunities to rev source instant rebate program to do some savings. We're also reviewing our billing. We think we found a way, there's been a issue that's always come up, that there's a surcharge if we turn on the lights before 8:00 p.m. It's an old thing that's been in place forever. It's one of those things I've been dealing with since I've gotten here and gone and run around so many times. We think this afternoon, we may have solved, and then we just have to change it from one type of account to another. And then, I mean, there was a, there's situations now that, there have been softball games out on the field that it's getting dark, so you say timeout for 20 minutes and wait for 8 o'clock to hit, and then turn the lights on. So that's what, how ridiculous it is that it gets out there. We think we may have solved it. Recreation's working with the school athletic director to address that, as well as trying to figure out what we can do to change the lighting over to LED. And that's all for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you very much, town manager. Any questions or discussion about the town manager's report? Counselor Dornblad?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just want to, to add a little bit to the Route 7 report. I'm not sure it's entirely clear, but the, the extra funding that Coast received will allow the service to be accessed from anywhere in town, and Coast is proposing to eliminate designated stops altogether. I, I do think that designated stops have a role, and I do think that we should consider as a community where there might be a place for at least one designated stop. And my thinking around this is that a designated stop is marketing also, so you know that the bus actually runs through town, and where you might catch it if you've never, you know, used the service before. And it also focuses attention on public transportation. So I, I think we, that would be, that would be my message to take to the, to the Coast meeting, and if anybody in the community is able to attend, I think it would be, it would be wonderful for Coast to hear that or any other concerns that you might have. If you can't go to the Newmarket meeting, which is in the middle of the day, you can go attend the meeting scheduled in Exeter if you can get there. If you need a ride, I'm going to go to the one in Exeter, so please feel free. I'm happy to offer seats in my car for that purpose. And also to note that the funding that allows for the slight expansion in service is in addition to the funding that Coast is receiving from the federal government and its foundation funding, so this is provided that the foundation will continue to fund, so that this is a little bit, it's an experiment. It's a test. It's a, it may or may not be something that we'll see for the long term, but the more we use it, the better it is. And it addresses the issue that we, that was brought to the table here from the folks living at Wadley Falls Senior Housing, who will now be able to catch the bus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the council like me to write a letter and present it at the September 11 meeting in the, yeah, on behalf of the council?
What was the question?
Would you like me to write a letter on behalf of the council and present it to them, supporting the changes?
Yes, I think that would be good.
Yeah.
Awesome. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, this isn't specifically related to the current report, but in the, in the budget, you put a line item for evaluating the fire department, right? I was wondering, I haven't heard anything on that.
Yeah. I, I've written the RFP. I've provided to the fire chief, and his crew's looking it over now, and they're going to issue it.
Oh, okay, so it hasn't?
Has not been sent out yet, but yeah, because I wanted them to have some buy-in on it.
And so, does that have to be done this fiscal year, or?
It was, yeah, so it has to begin this fiscal year, so it can get done, so.
Awesome. Other questions or comments for the town manager? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to item seven, which is committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Wow.
One sec. Sorry, actions. Yes.
Counselor Ward?
The budget meeting met on the 25th. The school presented it. They now, and after the tragic passing of Janet, Eda Mallon, Jenna Mallon, they have now hired a new person, a Bryant, Bryant Lee, who will be taking over that role. Mr. Lee is a, has had 20 years of experience in the field, and we, and he was starting to work with our, with the school before her tragic passing, so we're very excited that, well, the condition, the situation's tragic, but we're glad to have him onboard now. Let's see, the, I believe, yeah, the school is forming committee to find a new health insurer since the market's shrank a bit, and they are allocating more money to the school improvement capital reserve fund. And, yep, that was, that was it. They'll have their Q4 stuff for the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Ward. Any questions or discussion for Counsel Ward? Any questions or discussion for Council Ward? Okay. Any other committee reports? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to item nine, and that is resolutions and ordinances in the second reading. There are plenty of those this evening, councilors, there are six. So we are going to start working through these. The first is Resolution 2025-2026-7. That is the firewall equipment upgrade. At this time, I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Councilor Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Dornblatt. And Mr. Tappan, do you like to speak to this one today?
Sir, it's pretty simple. The Department of Safety, New Hampshire Department of Safety, decided that it needed to upgrade their VPN and equipment that communicates with other communities. And our equipment is not up to the same standards as theirs, even though ours is relatively new. And so because of that, we're having to upgrade, and so that's the reason for the resolution.
Okay. Questions for the Finance Director? Council Ward?
Last, just last a question, just, I'm glad that we're taking care of this. I've worked at a company that got hit by ransomware, so I know how disruptive it can be. So it's good that we're, you know, addressing this before something happens.
Okay. Any other discussion on the resolution? Okay. Seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Councilwoman Lamontina?
Aye.
Councilwoman Blount?
Aye.
Councilperson Eagleson?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Ward?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Okay. And the next resolution is Resolution 2025-2026-8, Increasing the Disabled Veterans Tax Credit. Town Manager, would you like to speak to this one?
After motion, a second.
Oh, okay. At this time, I would accept a motion to approve the resolution.
I will make a motion.
Thank you, Councilor Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Lamontina. My bid, my bid for a clean meeting just dashed. One day, you guys, one day I'm going to get all the way through, it's going to be perfect, it's going to be great.
So, in May, Governor Ayotte signed House Bill 998 into law, which amended RSA 7235, which increased the maximum allowable optional property tax credit for veterans with service-connected permanent and total disabilities from $4,000 to $5,000. And the law became effective July 13th. Once it's adopted by the municipality, it replaces all other veterans-related property tax credits for qualifying individuals, and it's not applied in addition to those other credits. So once they get this one, that's, that's it. It is the most that you can get. Newmarket currently provides a $4,000 tax credit for self-connected, for service-connected, totally and permanently disabled veterans. In addition, some qualifying veterans, what, this is the rub, may also be eligible for standard veteran credit, which is $750, bringing their total benefit to $4,750. If we don't amend this, they'll only receive the $4,000 and not their remaining 50. Under the new law, if we want to make, as I said, we want to maintain it, we'd have to amend it to $4,750. With only 15 individuals receiving it, I'd recommend increasing it to $5,000, the maximum limit. If there's no change in the number, it's a $3,750 loss in revenue, so it's minimal.
Okay.
So I just recommend that we change the veteran tax credit from $4,000, disabled service-connected veterans tax credit from $4,000 to $5,000.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, you answered, you answered my question. Are there any questions for the town manager or discussion on this resolution?
Just to.
Council Dornblatt?
Just to say that I support our voting for this. It makes sense. It seems like it's, would be an awful gap to, to create, so.
I grew up with a child of veterans. My mother would never forgive me if I didn't, if I didn't support this. So, yeah, I agree, that's the right thing to do. Okay. Seeing no other discussion, if you could call the roll.
Councilwoman Lamontina?
Aye.
Councilwoman Blount?
Aye.
Councilperson Eagleson?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Ward?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Okay. And next on our agenda is Resolution 2025-2026-9, Vector Truck Replacement Granite State Clean Fleets, GSCF Grant. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Councilor Ward. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Councilor Lamontina. And I will turn it over to the Town Engineer at this time.
Well, full of a program. So this resolution is a request to replace our existing vector trucks. The town currently owns and operates a vector truck that's shared between Environmental Services and Public Works Department and used to maintain our.
Explain what a vector truck is, Richard. The common, the common term for it is?
Yes, the vector truck is the very large truck that has a big boom and vacuum on the front of it that we use to vacuum out the catch basins, remove material from trenching. We use it for sewer blockages, clearing sewer blockages and things like that. So we use it to maintain our public infrastructure systems, sewer, water, and stormwater. So it's, the one we have is 21-plus years old. It's, it's aging, it's nearing the end of its useful life, and breakdowns happen more frequently, and repairs are becoming more expensive. So we have it in our vehicle replacement program to be replaced in the coming years. And in talking with Sean and Rick about the timeline for replacement, they received quotes that the replacement truck would cost $635,000. So I prepared and submitted an application to New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, the Granite State Clean Fleets Grant Program. And we were selected to be funded. So the selection, that means we are seeking approval to enter into the grant agreement with New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for covering 70% of the cost of the truck, and then also request expenditure of the remaining 30% from the capital reserve funds from sewer, water, and stormwater management. $63,500 from each of those capital reserve funds.
Okay. Questions for the Town Engineer? Just one, and I don't even think it's really a question. So, so a new vector truck is roughly $635,000. You wrote a grant that's going to wipe out $444,500 from that total. And that is why we're, that is why we're requesting to pursue this now rather than, like, later. Okay. Okay. Awesome. Any comments or discussion on this from councilors? Seeing none from anybody else, I'll just say I'm in favor of this. And as always, I'm so deeply appreciative of you and everybody who goes out of their way to care for the purse of Newmarket taxpayers and works proactively to try to make sure that, that our town is running and that our equipment is running and that our citizens are well-served, and we're just so appreciative. Seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll.
Councilwoman Lamontina?
Aye.
Councilwoman Blount?
Aye.
Councilperson Eagleson?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Ward?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Okay. And moving right along, the next resolution in the second reading is Resolution 2025-2026-10, Septic Project Phase One Construction. And at this time, I would accept a motion, gentlemen, to approve that resolution.
I will make the motion.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Dornblatt. This time, Mr. Creek, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, this has been going on for quite a long time, trying to get the septic out of the park, from Creighton Street and kicking up some of this water. As you can see, the town has, over the past three years, has taken in about 17 million gallons of septic for a revenue of $1.7 million. But that has put quite a lot of truck traffic down through Creighton Street at the lift station there, which is not good for our park and the area, because generally you get most of that septic during warm weather, and people want to use the park. So this here is to start the construction project. We received bids on it, the lowest bid was Apex Construction of 1.9 million. They're the ones that actually built the wastewater treatment facility, so they're very good contractors. And then I'm looking to, for the budget, construction budget of $2,424,464. That includes construction, contingency, materials testing, and construction administration. And then I'm looking to pull the funds from the Septic Capital Improvements Fund, wastewater system development charges, and from the sewer capital improvement funds.
Okay. Questions? Council Lamontina?
So you wouldn't use Creighton Street April through October, the summer months? That's because of people down there, whatever. Would you continue to use it during the winter months, or what's?
We'd have to, but we receive very limited septic during those months.
During April through October is limited?
April through October would be strictly at the wastewater treatment plant. And we would even possibly, depending on how cold it gets, it could be April through November or December, depending on what the climate is. This was phase one. We are looking to do phase two down the road. We just couldn't afford to enclose it, so it was a year-round station.
So, does Creighton Street ever become obsolete?
Creighton Street never comes obsolete, because if we don't have Creighton Street, none of the wastewater gets to the wastewater plant.
It's a pump.
Yeah, it's, it's, because everything gravities to Creighton Street, and then everything is pumped up to the wastewater treatment plant.
Awesome.
So, yeah, so Creighton Street can't go away. Real estate. Oh, I know, we've got the best real estate in town.
You do.
Council Dornblatt?
So, but I understand that you said there's a, there's a phase two in the plan, and that would mean that the septic receiving could take place year-round.
Yes.
Off, off Creighton Street.
Yes, totally.
So that, the facility is there, but it wouldn't be to receive trucks, or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That's, I think that makes a lot of sense, so. And I have just one, one other, other question. Is this, is this something that you, you have to have? Is this something that you, you want to have? Is this something that has a financial benefit to the town? Why are we, why are we, why are we doing, moving, if we have a functioning facility, why are we creating another one?
So Creighton Street is not designed to take that septic. We're actually wearing the equipment very quickly because it's not made for that. The new station will actually remove material. It's designed to remove the stuff that shouldn't go through your system, like the sand, grit, whatever people flush down in the septic system.
Yeah.
It will also improve the productivity of the wastewater treatment facility, because right now we slug it in, you know, it just goes straight in. Now it's going to be in a tank, it's going to have a little bit of treatment, and it will bleed it into the system, so the treatment plant will run better.
Okay.
And then the other piece was, we get a lot of complaints about the amount of truck traffic going down Creighton Street.
Yeah.
And it was my understanding that we did not want the truck traffic going through our park.
So there are multiple benefits that we will be realizing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And it should improve on some older, too, so. We have, so the new system, it will actually treat it and actually help keep the odor down.
Gotcha. Okay.
So there's quite a few benefits.
Thank you.
Other questions? Any discussion on this resolution? Council Dornblatt?
I just want to say that I, I really appreciate the, the forward-thinking approach that this, this kind of proposal presents to, to us as a, as a community. And I am really impressed with the thoughtfulness and, 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 and planfulness that the department is, is acting. And I, I, I'm very much in favor of this resolution.
Agreed. Sean, please don't retire. Okay. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Councilwoman Lamontina?
Aye.
Councilwoman Blount?
Aye.
Councilperson Eagleson?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Ward?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Okay. Our next item in the second reading is Resolution 2025-2026-11, Water System Hydraulic Pressure Zone Evaluation. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I will make a motion.
Thank you, Councilor Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Dornblatt. Turn it back over to you again.
So as most of you were here back in April, May, when this was presented, our Water Master Plan was identified that we needed another water tower and that we have a pressure zone problem up in that area where the water tower is. And so we don't get the full beneficial use of a water tower. And the recommendation was to do a pressure zone evaluation and then expand and build into water tower to increase our water storage. So this here is the first step into doing evaluation of the area to determine how we can improve that pressure zone as long, and also include the new water tower into that project. Underwood Engineers has given us a proposal of $58,500, and I'm asking for us to pull that money out of water capital reserve, which there is money in there for the new water tower and that kind of project, so it is there for this purpose.
Okay. Questions? Council Lamontina?
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand. So my understanding is, once you lose that first quarter of water, you don't have enough pressure in the system, is that?
In certain areas of town, your highest points. So it's shown on the water model, I believe it's, or in the ballpark. But it shows in the water model that when we get below the 45 feet, there are some houses that would have below or right at 20 PSI water pressure.
Are these the new houses up on Great Hill that would be impacted, or?
Some of those, I believe some of those, but there are some others that were there, that have been there for even longer. And by state statute, we're not allowed to go below that 20 PSI ever. So that is a state rule.
So are we saying that technically only one quarter of the water in that tank is usable?
For the whole system, yes. And what I mean, the whole system, most of the system would have above 20 PSI. There's just a limited band up there that doesn't have, that wouldn't have 20 PSI.
Do we need a moratorium on new building in Newmarket that's on the water system?
That's not.
Can you even do that?
Yeah, that's, according to the rules they've built in the, according to the height of the level of the tank, of the height of the drain line.
Okay, Council Dornblatt, and then Council Blackstone.
Thank you. Can you give us some examples of what, what might be an outcome of the, of the study? What are some, some solutions that might be presented to Newmarket?
And this has actually happened in Dover, in my area, where there's a problem, is they actually created a pressure zone with a water tower and segmented off that piece so that the water tower could be used to keep the pressure in that area. There's other things that you can do, is you can segment off certain areas and have booster pumps that come on and boost the pressure. We actually have one in Newmarket right now, up on Folsom.
Okay.
Folsom and Great Hill, actually there's 40 houses there that have a booster station to it. So we actually do have a pressure zone in Newmarket right now. Okay.
Thank you.
Council Blackstone?
He answered the question.
Okay. Other questions? Any discussion on this resolution? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. If you could call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Lamontina?
Aye.
Aye.
Council Blount?
Aye.
Council Eagleson?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Ward?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye. Okay. Thank you. And our final resolution in the second reading this evening is Resolution 2025-2026-12, MS4 Outfall Screening Dry Weather. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve this resolution.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Councilor Ward. And do I have a second?
Second.
I will second.
Thank you. Let's do Councilor Lamatina. Thank you. I'll turn it over to the Town Engineer, who always has the most interestingly-named resolutions. Talk to me about this one.
Yes, and we live in a lot of acronyms.
Yeah.
So, MS4 outfalls. The town is an MS4 community, so it's regulated under the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System General Permit. That's what the MS4 is. So, uh, the dry weather note here is, part of our requirements under MS4 are that the town needs to inspect and screen all of our outfalls during dry weather conditions. There are also requirements for wet weather, but that's not what we're talking about here, so that's the note in the dry weather. Um, so, I have inspected and screened 15 of our outfalls. Geosyntec consultants have assisted, and they've inspected eight as part of the work that we're doing for stormwater investigation in Moonlight Brook. And we have roughly 30 remaining to be inspected. Uh, I would like to continue working with Geosyntec to, because they've, um, been using our GIS system. They understand our workflows and using our inspection forms, and we have a good system going. And they have more staff resources to assist and time availability to get it done. So, um, I would like to, uh, request expenditure of $25,000 from the Stormwater Management Capital Reserve Fund for partnering with Geosyntec and for also purchasing the field test kits that can be used for screening these outfalls. And it's the same type of equipment that Geosyntec uses during those inspections.
Thank you very much. Questions for the Town Engineer? Uh, Council Lamatina?
So, what are you actually testing for? Bacterial content? What, what are you actually testing?
Bacteria is one of the pollutants. Um, the pollutants that concern under the MS4 permit are nitrogen, phosphorus, bacteria. Um, and there are test kits that screen for chlorine, ammonia, and surfactants that could indicate likely sewer inputs. So, those are what we're screening for, to see if there's a likely sewer input, um, connection, if there's dry weather flow. Most of our outfalls that I've inspected do not have dry weather flow. Uh, when we have flow, we do the screening to see and confirm whether or not there's potential sewer input.
And so, what happens if you find, you know, bacteria, or, or say chlorine or something? And what do you, what happens?
If the screening meets the thresholds for further investigation, then we work through further investigation through the catchment and storm system. Following are more acronyms. IDDE, illicit discharge detection and elimination program, which is another arm of compliance under that.
Okay. Um, other questions? Council Blackstone?
Moonlight Brook. Just talk to me, are, are we ever gonna solve that? Or is it just gonna be an ongoing project forever? I mean, it seems like it's, I'm not trying to be critical, Lindsay. It just seems like it, it's always this amorphous thing.
Is, um, is that related to the expenditure of the testing? Or is this just a question about?
Well, yeah, no, she's testing Moonlight Brook with these things. This is a dry land testing. She's doing Moonlight Brook.
And has it ever, has the testing been completed yet?
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out. What are we doing to?
Geosyntec has sampled eight of the outfalls that discharged from Moonlight Brook. I don't have the, the results, but there was flow, and they did screen some of them. There was one, um, outfall that had potential threat, met thresholds for potential likely sewer input, and we are working with Geosyntec to investigate that portion. The remain, this request is outfalls that are primarily outside of Moonlight Brook. Some of the remaining outfalls, um, within our MS4 system. My very short answer to your, yes, I would hope that we can identify it. The screening that we've done thus far did not indicate sewer input during, from within our stormwater system. So, we have taken steps to make an effort to understand that it's not coming from our public infrastructure.
Uh, Council Dornblut?
Thank you. Fairly small, um, amount. Is this something that will be used, is this this year, or?
Yes, this year.
Yes, yeah. And so, you're expecting to be finished with this in the fall?
Yes, this fall. I would like to get it done this fall. Um, Geosyntec has availability to get it done before snowfall. So, my hope is, before December timeframe, we can get them all inspected.
Excellent. Thank you.
Real quick. So, the town currently has, you said, like, 52 outfalls?
MS4.
MS4 outfalls? And, um, staff has, um, has tested, inspected about 15?